People are planning to, we appreciate everyone's participation. Something that we really encourage is if you have the exact same thing or even somewhat similar thing to say as someone who has spoken before you, it is completely appropriate to give the signal that the kids do in school of like, "Me too, I agree." Or to get up very briefly and said, "I agree with previous speaker, Mr. Jones." We appreciate that. It is just as meaningful and it makes us happy, so that's even maybe more meaningful. So just something to consider, but how many, by show of hands, how many people are planning to speak this evening? Okay, all right, so there are quite a few hands, so we are going to be limiting the speakers to three minutes. And so we will give you a warning at two and a half minutes that you have 30 seconds remaining. We have started at our school committee meetings with using a timer to help keep things moving along and so that we don't have to vocally interrupt you, that you have an indicator. So you will get a warning at two and a half minutes, and then at three minutes, the timer will go off, and we will ask you to conclude and sit down at that time. We will be starting with a short presentation about the long-term capital plan that interim superintendent Lemus is going to give for us, and then we will move straight into the public comment. So, thank you.
I just want to ask you, before I start presenting, I do want to say one thing and sort of step out a little bit and maybe take a risk here. Something folks have heard me speak about quite a bit so far since I became interim is just the idea of leading with civility. And so I want, in our sort of first public hearing, public comment opportunities since I've become interim superintendent, I just want to sort of charge people with that. This is very, very important topics. In fact, most everything the school committee and our schools deal with is very, very important because it happens to deal with our children and the future of Brookline in many ways. Around building projects and long-term capital planning, there's also a lot of important matters. There's neighborhoods, there's the future of our schooling of our children, there's history. We bring so much to this conversation tonight, and I would just urge folks, emotion and passion are expected and welcomed, and also disagreement will happen in the room as well tonight. And I urge folks to disagree without disrespecting. That includes no personal attacks anyway. I can guarantee that everyone in this room is looking out for their, what they think is best for Brookline and our students. And that's a real commonality and a real force, I think, of common power and common purpose. But I will urge folks to, again, bring everything in half tonight, but please keep it respectful, keep it civil, and that'll help us all move together and move forward together. So, thank you.
And the only other last thing I did want to say is that the school committee, we are here tonight to listen, and so we will not be responding back to comments, and there will not be a vote on anything this evening. We will be having a discussion and potentially a vote on the long-term capital plan and on the Driscoll Four warrant, the special town meeting, Article Four, at our school committee meeting this Thursday. So, thank you.
If people can't hear me, let me know, and I will speak. Thank you. So, I'll begin. So I want to remind folks of the Three-School Solution that was agreed upon by the select board, the school committee, and the ad hoc subcommittee back in June 2018. This is where we have been operating underneath, and it's what we're continuing to operate underneath. Tonight, we'll sort of remind folks of that and also add some more detail considering, you know, more recent developments which we'll go through. At that point, the three boards there really use a body of work that was generated really since 2009 to address Brookline's historic enrollment growth. And that body of work included site selection studies, numerous ones, enrollment projection studies, a feasibility study, expansion place efforts that have built 55 classrooms and/or leased that many classrooms in our system, and then more than 80 public meetings between 2015 and 18. So it was a lot of work in the, you know, with the community over many, many years that led to that Three-School Solution. So that Three-School Solution remains in place, and that really focused on a five-section school, a four-section school, and what we call a "two-plus-plus-plus" section school, which you should probably get a better name for, that's kind of awkward. But anyway, the five-section school is renovating, rebuilding Pierce with MSBA. The four-section school is planned to be a rebuilt and expanded Driscoll School. And the "two-plus-plus" section school was Baldwin, and we were planning to do that at Baldwin. It could potentially be Old Lincoln, Newbury, or a site that's unidentified at this point. Just to explain what "two-plus-plus" means, that means two sections, so two classrooms at each grade level, pre-8 through 8, and then plus some specific programs. So when we were planning on Baldwin and developing that plan, it was a RISE program, a native language support program for English language learners, and also BEEP. So the third plus is BEEP, so BEEP classrooms, which we're hoping that whenever we renovate or expand a school building, as you'll see later, we're always planning on, yeah, thank you, on including BEEP classrooms in those buildings. So just in terms of ongoing need for long-term capital planning, we haven't yet actually solved any of the challenges that the Three-School Solution laid out, laid out just to address. So we still have many ongoing needs and therefore an ongoing need for long-term capital planning. With this plan, we want to address and find solutions for continued overcrowding, substandard facilities, particularly those that are for our most vulnerable populations. We need additional space for special education and English learner education programs. We want to continue to turn BEEP classrooms into K-8, into our K-8 schools, and also have a BEEP center north of Brookline and in the south of Brookline. We have to address our administrative space needs that used to be in school buildings and now are temporarily housed at Clark Road. They moved recently from our Education Resource Center on Webster Place. We also, and that goes to sort of two other pieces, we've completed the Expanded Place Program that's provided 55 classrooms, 11 leased, and 44 inside of school buildings. That's built out and complete. There is no further possibility for Expanding Place, and I'll describe that a little bit in a moment. And then also, the school committee and its planning at this point is really working on only planning to use properties that are currently under its control. You'll see that's repeated as number one here because it's worth repeating. That's the school committee will only plan on using properties that are currently under its control, okay? So that's what we're laying out here with some additional options as well that we'll talk through. So the "five", "four", and "two-plus-plus" with BEEP, that's this plan, the Three-School Plan, does a number of things. It allows the district to balance current enrollment and accommodate projected student growth by adding a net of 37 additional classrooms across the district, okay? Whether enrollment goes up, stays the same, or goes down, we still have overcrowding in all of our schools except for Coolidge Corner, okay? This plan would address the school committee's long-term goal, bring BEEP classes back into our K-8 schools, and eventually terminate leased classroom space for BEEP and other schools. It allows the district to complete or go forward within the Complete Middle Student Reassignment, and expand spaces to bring early education classes back into our elementary schools, and also having the Lynch Center and the Baldwin School as early childhood centers at either end of town. This plan does not address the district administrative spaces that are temporarily housed at the Clark Rural Building, and also housed at the Spurborough Education Center, okay? And also, we will mention Baker tonight, there are no yet long-term solutions for Baker. Baker's long-term solutions will also have to be included in our long-term planning as we go forward. So I'll start with the five-section Pierce. So this would be an MSBA project, it's underway. I'll explain what underway means because it goes quite slowly for quite a long time. Just as background, the Pierce Historical Building, which is still in operation for our younger grades, was built in 1899, and the building that you know, the concrete building, was built in 1974. Essentially, billing systems and envelope-related elements and ADA accessibility need remediation and updating, if not complete rebuilding. It was originally designed as a three-section school, that's three classrooms per grade, K through 8, and now holds five sections, okay? There's been no expansion of core academic spaces, the cafeteria, gymnasium, library, auditorium, and that means they're inadequate for the student body and out of date. So on these slides, whether it's Pierce or Driscoll, I'm not going to go through the litany of shortcomings each building has, okay? We've done that on numerous occasions, and they're available on our website, and I'll show that to you in a moment where you can access those, but just wanted to give folks a summary tonight. This is the MSBA project timeline, so we are just in the eligibility period at this top line, okay? That goes until February 2020, okay? We're forming a project team, or we have a project team, we have a building committee, I'm sorry. There are two dates I want to point out. That's funding the project, sorry, that exclusion override here, May 2021 likely, and then the MSBA vote on the project. It's the Massachusetts School Building Authority vote on the project. We will not know whether this project's going forward to construction until this date, May 2021, okay? That's more than a year and a half from now, okay? If the town, town meeting and voters vote to fund the project, the MSBA still has to also vote to support the project, okay? To remain working with MSBA, all right? In terms of the most optimistic timeline from here, it is likely that the Pierce project will not be completed until 2026, okay? And any one of these different milestones can allow that to slip, okay? But that's what we're shooting out for is completion of the project and a new Pierce building in 2026. So looking at the Driscoll, so remember, we're not working with the MSBA on this one. Driscoll also has reached the completion of its life cycle. It was built originally in 1911 as a two-section school. Through a variety of additions and conversion of classrooms, it became a three-section school a number of years ago. It still operates as that one grade, excuse me, has four classes. The building in many, many ways that we detailed before does not meet either, you know, 21st century education, particularly the middle school classrooms are very small for that purpose. Everything in terms of safety, play area, traffic and parking, I mean, traffic and school access are underwhelming and inadequate. And I imagine you might hear more tonight from folks who want to speak of the inadequacies that Driscoll faces right now and their students suffer from. So in terms of the timeline for Driscoll, so possible product timeline, the Article Four, it's one of the reasons we're here tonight, would have to be passed November by town meeting. That would then, the school, the school committee, the select board will need to put on the townwide referendum, a vote for funding, construction documents and construction. The modifications to the original timeline are what you see below. Construction document, if there is a, and these all depend on really when and if the town votes to support funding, okay? So the earliest and most aggressive timeline would be summer 2020, construction documents will be complete, okay? Construction commences sometime late fall 2020, and occupancy would be fall '22 or '23. That is, again, most aggressive, optimistic, and is very easy to slip from that. Really, every day passes, we risk slipping from that and going further into winter 2023 or down, you know, all the way to fall 2023. If you ever want to know all the background of the Driscoll building plans, the schematic and feasibility phases, they're all there on that website right there in full detail. All the presentations, all the plans, all estimates are all there. So then moving on to Old Lincoln School, so Old Lincoln and Baldwin are the only school states that the school committee and town control. So we are now considering and moving forward with Old Lincoln as a two-plus-plus school. Old Lincoln's currently serving VHS ninth grade very, very capably, and just before that, it served upper devotion very capably. VHS will be there through June 2021. There are 18 to 20 general education classrooms there, and additional four to six classrooms for art, music, special education services, and learning supports. The rooms have been fully renovated. Old Lincoln has a mixed reputation in town, but if you haven't seen it lately, you haven't seen Old Lincoln, okay? It's a great facility at this point, has served a lot of kids, has served kids every single day, and has done a great job at it. It's in good shape. It even has conditioned air, which we can explain later if you like. It's not air conditioning, it's conditioned air, okay? Anyway, the possible timeline for Old Lincoln, this is very important, okay? There is a timeline that could get us to occupancy for some grades in 2021, fall 2021. So if you think of VHS leaving, if the VHS project stays on time, okay? VHS would leave at its earliest, June of 2021. Could potentially have the building reorganized for elementary in summer of 2021, and then it opens for an elementary school in fall, in September of 2021, okay? That is a quick turnaround, it's optimistic, it's aggressive. If the VHS project slips and we need to have Old Lincoln to serve them into fall 2021, obviously you can't do that. But there are many important decisions that have to happen before that happens, and that would begin in January 2020, which is planning would begin for student assignment. So which students, or not which students, but you know, where would students come from in terms of the, you know, the neighborhoods around that site, okay? How would that either adjust or overlay existing school zones? You'd also have to figure out how you would sort of grow that school. Is it grade by grade? Do you start with K-2 and then grow it? But those are the types that assume that have to be started, we have to start to work on in January 2020, which is only like three months from now, okay? Spring 2020, we hire a principal, and that person would start in the fall, so they would begin the planning for how the school would work. They would start hiring staff in winter through spring 2021, and those staff would start in summer and obviously fall of 2021. That's the most aggressive time schedule for Old Lincoln. The other possibility for two-plus-plus section school would be on a site that's to be determined, okay? We maintain the need for 37 classrooms, similar to Baldwin School design. Newbury College is currently being studied for 140,000 square foot school and many other uses by the town. And then the possible product timeline on that is, and all we've given here is sort of a five-year process, okay? So it all depends, you know, sort of the July after the school site is located, a design feasibility phase could begin, and then you'll see the various phases of constructing the school, designing feasibility, schematic design, townwide referendum vote, construction and technical drawings, demolition, construction, and then occupancy. And that, again, most aggressive timeline would be at least five, would be five years for that, after the site is located, identified, located, purchased, in our control, basically. So moving on to BEEP, so this is where there's a little new information in terms of sort of long-term planning on this, but these are longstanding goals for the school, of the school committee has had for many years, is one, bring early education classrooms back into our K-8 schools, along with the two early childhood centers we talked about, as long as having, as well as having early childhood centers, I'm sorry. So we had Lynch Center, we had other ones in leased spaces, but really where we want to head is one in north Brookline, one in the south Brookline, and Baldwin would be the south Brookline BEEP Center. The school committee has also had a longstanding commitment to expanding BEEP classrooms. Our limiting factor to date has been, hasn't been demand, it has been spaces. Where do you actually have those classrooms? If we, so with Clark Road and with Baldwin, we have some potential, and then as we renovate or expand schools, that's where the potential for expanding BEEP lies. In all future school renovations or rebuildings, we would make sure we would include at least two, if not three, BEEP classrooms. That's what we did at Coolidge Corner, that's what we would do with Driscoll, it's in the plan at Driscoll, had three BEEP classrooms, that's what we would do at Pierce as well. In the short term, the BEEP classes that were, continue to move out of K-8 buildings, okay, which is in direct opposition to the long-term goal, we understand that, is doing that and moving some to Clark Road, will move Heath ones to Baldwin. That's one of the few ways we have of giving relief to the existing K-8s. So for example, this fall, we moved the Driscoll BEEP out of the Clark Road building, and that allowed to free up one space, well, one space for special education room, where special education students are being serviced and supported, as opposed to being supported in hallways, okay? And that also allowed another classroom that everyone was jammed into to support English language learners as well, okay? So now we have two really, really strong, good learning spaces where you had kids in two overcrowded classrooms or in the hallways. And that's because we not only moved the BEEP classroom to Clark Road, but the great work of the Driscoll staff to make two really fantastic sort of student support centers, basically. We'll do the same for Heath, the plan is to do the same for Heath next year, move the two BEEP classrooms to Baldwin, and that will allow us to start a RISE program at Heath and thereby relieving Runkell of some of its challenges it has in terms of space. Locations FY20, FY26, so this is sort of the, where we can, you know, put BEEP classrooms, okay? So by next fall, a year from now, only three BEEP classrooms will remain in our K-8 schools, one at Runkell, two at Coolidge Corner. Lynch can have five classrooms, the Beacon Center can have five classrooms that those are leased, Clark Road can have up to four classrooms, that's leased space. Baldwin would have two moved from Heath. When Winthrop House moves to VHS campus, we could potentially move three more classrooms, say from Putterham into Baldwin, we'll talk more about that, or start three more classrooms. Putterham has capacity for six classrooms. One important piece here is as Hancock Village comes online, or if, when it does, as we know, there's potential for Baker to have increased student enrollment. As that happens at Baker, if or when it happens to Baker with increased student enrollment, we may need to move kindergarten classrooms from Baker to Putterham, and then that would force us to move those BEEP classrooms to perhaps the Baldwin or someplace else. But in terms of overflow at Baker, one option we have right now is to move K-classrooms from Baker to Putterham, which we're leasing, similar to what we expect to be doing with the Pierce K-classrooms and maybe other classrooms over to Clark Road, okay? That's just sort of looking forward. We don't know when Hancock Village classroom will come online, and we don't know exactly, you know, when they'll start impacting Baker School, but we know, we expect it to be happening. So that's how it's going to be, BEEP Center, Baldwin, as I've said numerous times, Baldwin is the south Brookline BEEP Center, Lynch is the north Brookline BEEP Center. In July 2020, the Brookline School Staff Children Center is there. The center was given notice in fall 2018, and I've been working with school members since then to identify next steps. We do need that space in September 2020, both for classrooms from Heath, BEEP administrative space, but also, as you'll see later, central office space for essential programming that supports students all over the town. We, I'll explain that further in a moment, but that's a space we desperately need at this point, as we only, as I said, control two properties, Baldwin and Old Lincoln, and those are the only places, without incurring more lease costs, we can actually place all those folks who support our students. In July 2021, Winthrop House moves into the VHS campus, opening up War Room at Baldwin, and September 2021 and beyond, we could add more classrooms there, depending what's happening at Baker and Putterham. A few more things to look into, we're going to talk about Baker School expansion quickly, and then also our needs for administrative space. By 2028, if not now, the Baker School will reach its current life cycle. It was built in '36, additions were made in '38, '53, and renovation additions were made in 1997, okay? It's currently operating as a four-section school, it was built in a two-section school. It has similar challenges in terms of, I mean, hallways, auditorium, gymnasiums, these are out of date, too small for the number of students who are there, also modular classrooms that are attached to the building as well. School committee has not discussed the Baker School renovation expansion recently above that, but we do know that we need to be expecting enrollment to expand there as Hancock Village comes online. Baker would likely be sort of the next in line after we address the Three-School Solution that we've been talking about tonight. Then office and administrative space. So in order to help fund the space for classroom space at Clark Road, the school committee and school department gave up leases at 24 Webster Place and also 62 Harvard. Those affect us in two ways. One way affects classroom space at Pierce, giving up five classrooms at 62 Harvard, and it also affects the nearly 50 staff members who are at 24 Webster Place, who support a number of things. They support our English language education program, English language learners, sorry. They help all our families register and enroll their children. They are folks who lead our Metco program, they're our Brookline Adult Community Education staff, they're our transportation staff and food services staff. These are folks who are essential to the operations and malfunction of our schools. Because they've moved, we've moved them this year temporarily, some of them to Clark Road, some are now on the fifth and fourth floor here, okay? They and 18 staff members who are at the Spurborough Education Center will need to be housed someplace a year from now. At this point, we don't have leases in place, we will have some space at Baldwin, and then there has been some discussion about the Oak Street condominium, so we'll talk about that further in a moment. But those are essential staff members who support students and staff across the whole entire system, and they need to have office space and a place to work from. Just want to see, so here are some ideas on things that could happen for supporting these folks who support our schools on town-owned property. You could put them in trailers in a variety of places, maybe outside of Town Hall, in the public library. You could put them in trailers on the Cannon Street parking lot or on Webb Street parking. You could put them on high, you know, two-high, meaning two-story-high trailers, these are modular buildings really, on the green space behind Brookline Public Health Center, okay? So as you can see, those are pretty desperate measures, but just trying to get across, you know, we're looking at all sort of possibilities. We could also, as we did in the past, issue a lease for office space, so RFQ for office space, however, that would, all of this would require CIP funding. Just a quick word on the Oak Street condos. So while there's been discussion and talk at moving, making Oak Street condominiums administrative space, they would take significant code modifications to make those suitable as a public administrative office building. The planning board, I may have to help move this one, the planning board voted not to move forward with that and not to recommend that we use that, those condominiums for office space. Town meeting warned Article Five, is considered, will consider discarding the Oak Street condominiums. Can you tell me just what the links are for?
So the links for the Capitol August 13th?
That relates to Oak Street, yeah, yeah.
That's Dan Bennett's memo on that modification.
So our building commissioner, Dan Bennett, has given a memo on, to the Capitol Improvement Subcommittee about what it would take and the costs and modification that would be necessary for the Oak Street condos to be used as administrative office space and be rezoned and then modified for, to be used.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the bottom link there, it's the Town Meeting Warn Article Number Five. I believe that's it of me talking quickly.
So that'll bring us to the public comment portion of our meeting. I would like to give the opportunity, if any of the petitioners are present, to Ms. Nubrega, I believe that you're the petitioner on one of the warrant articles, and then Mr. Nannian as well. I'd like to give you the opportunity to seek first if you choose to do so.
We'll do it in numerical order.
Go for it.
Let's see if this magic there works.
I just, while Mr. Nannian's getting set up, is anyone, we do ask at our meetings, if anyone, we are being recorded by BIG. We were able to get this set up. We were able to get this set up. Thank you to Ms. Coyne, who was able to get that set up for us today. So that will be recorded and available online, as well as available live if anyone is watching at home. And also, is anyone recording this evening so that any of the speakers would know? Okay. So no one in the room is speaking, I mean, is recording, just so you know? It is, yes. You can, okay? I will try holding it up. Yes.
Yeah, why don't you go while I, I make my.
Good evening. Is this picking up okay? So warrant Article V is an article not to discard Oak Street condos, but to authorize the select board to sell them if and when the select board chooses to do so. The, as noted earlier in the presentation, the site is not currently zoned for office space, and so there is the significant additional cost of, not only, well, there's the cost to rebuild the properties so that they can be used for office space, which has been estimated by town staff at 900? Yeah, at least 900,000 in addition to the current cost of the property. And in addition to that, actually, it would need to be rezoned as office space, which also presents a litigation risk. So again, the warrant article just allows the select board, authorizes the select board to sell the properties at such time as they choose to do so.
Thank you for bearing with me here. Yeah, I'm a software engineer, so computers officially hate me. It's an occupational hazard. My name is Scott Nannian. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10 and one of, a number of co-petitioners on this article, also a Driscoll parent. My son's sitting there, not paying attention to me at all, which is good. And that's my daughter there on the slide. She's, would have been in BEEP at Driscoll this year before the last-minute move. She'll be at Driscoll next year as a kindergartner. So I'm going to go very quickly through the first parts because I shouldn't really have to, so these are actually from school committee slides to begin with, so I don't have to really make this point again. There's Zachary up on the screen there. So what I'm here today is to urge the school committee to vote on ambiguous support for warrant Article Four and to request the select board take steps to ensure a timely vote is held, and Driscoll's fall 2022 opening, which, as we said, is the most optimistic opening date for it, is not delayed. And this is, you know, the school department's slides. I shouldn't have to go over the inadequate spaces at Driscoll again, but they're on the school department's website. The next slide, again, is a typical PTO meeting from late last year, where we're trying to have a PTO meeting on this side, and they're, oh, you're missing the beautiful sound. So just imagine a class full of kids at the far side practicing violin, which is a beautiful sound, beginning violin, as another class is walking through in the middle on their way to and from their class, and in the background, you can't see, but they're fixing lunch, because this is the cafeteria. So there's pots and pans clanging, there's violins, there's a classroom walking through, and there's a PTO meeting all trying to take place in the same spot. So, and we have a beautiful building that's been designed, which is the process of a long compromise and series of negotiations between the Driscoll Building Committee and the community. It's, I won't say it's a perfect building, but it's a wonderful process. It was the result of a wonderful process of negotiation. So this is what we hope is another step in a project to reunite the town. So Driscoll Four was approved 220 to two in town meeting back in December. We had over 500 signatures on an open letter to the select board in May. We have commitments from prominent folks involved in both the yes and no campaign from last May's election, supporting Driscoll. Item 67 urging swift action on Driscoll passed by almost three-quarters in town meeting in May. The Capitol Subcommittee of the School Committee endorsed this three-school plan, which, as you saw, includes Driscoll Four earlier this month. And we've always said our goal is to build a robust organization so that we can support that exclusion overrides funding for Driscoll, Pierce, and what's next. This is the language that Town Meeting approved. You'll note that it directed the select board to hold this special town election before special town meeting, which is November 19th of this year. And so I think Ben got one fact slightly wrong. What we need next is the townwide election, and then Town Meeting will vote on it. Town Meeting has already voted twice in favor of Driscoll. Now we need the town to pass the debt exclusion. This is just a quick distribution of signatures for the open letters, showing support from around town. We always have this sort of low population density issue with maps of this type in the south of Brookline. But we had, and the next one, there you go. There's zooming in on Driscoll, you can see a lot of the immediate butters of the Driscoll School. I'm supporting it as well. So what we're hoping is to encourage the town to embrace this opportunity. We have a community which is willing to endure years of disruption, the loss of their old two-section beautiful building. We have town members who've invested literally thousands of dollars. We already have donated in a bank account waiting to go for this, and countless are into organizing, putting shoe leather down to canvassing, to help the town finally make the first step to addressing this overcrowding problem, which we've heard about for years and years and years. And we're committed to this campaign and the next ones. And again, it's costly to delay because construction costs, inflation in the Boston area is really extreme, in excess of a percent a year. That works out for Driscoll to over $175,000 a week we're wasting by delaying the start of this project. I'm right, this is like penultimate here. Ready to go, we've said. And then this is just the thing that I wanted to leave you with is, for everyone, this is kind of where we are in the process. We're having the public here on September 3rd. The school committee is going to vote on the 26th, and then the next step is for the select board to set an election, and we're hoping for an election on November 5th, and the select board needs to act by October 1st for that to happen. Thank you very much, and thank you, Julia, for the extra.
Next up, we have Rebecca Stone and then David Lescouet on deck.
Good evening. Rebecca Stone, I'm a town meeting member and chair of the Brookline Commission for Women, but I am speaking tonight only for myself, and I'm reasonably sure no one else will be addressing the same issue. I am here before you to make the equivalent of a hail mary pass, to see if we can break out of the boxes in the long-term capital plan that continue to suggest, as we have since B-space, that our future hinges on a ninth K-through-eight elementary school. I, I'm going to try, all right, I'll try. I believe our future should instead be anchored by creating a new, dynamic, student-centered approach to combined pre-K and kindergarten. We should be building an early childhood program that serves everyone, taking kindergartens out of the elementary buildings, and giving early childhood the spaces and the resources it needs to again make Brookline a leader in high-quality early education. It has been more than eight years since MGT originally told us that we needed a ninth school in Brookline, but that there was nowhere to build it, and we've now spent those eight years proving them right. We have considered countless strong proposals that, for whatever set of reasons, could not garner the magical combination of financial, political, civic, and neighborhood backing to happen. It is time to stop trying to shoehorn this school into a town that can't or won't embrace it. But we can build a comprehensive early childhood program that serves our pre-K and kindergarten students. But because no one site works for this, we would center the program in two new facilities to be built at Newbury College and Baldwin, and use our existing facility at the Lynch Center for a long-needed intake and family support center. Classes could be organized so children would still attend school with the classmates from their future elementary assignment, so that when they join the elementary school in first grade, they will move there with the children who are already friends and playmates. Crucially, taking this approach solves our overcrowding without requiring redistricting. That alone is worth its weight in gold. Yes, there are challenges. We need a successful outcome on the Newbury negotiations and an agreement on the 3.1 Western Acres. We need the early childhood use of Baldwin to be acceptable to those who have fought against the K-8 proposals. We would need to exempt the Coolidge Corner School from the townwide program because it was carefully constructed to include pre-K and kindergarten, and repurposing that could ignite a clawback situation with MSBA. But Coolidge Corner is our largest elementary school, so it is already a substantial early childhood program in and of itself, and it's newly outfitted with the kinds of program spaces we want for all of our children. There's no reason not to have that program remain in place. In summary, this would solve the ninth school problem by opening up the space we need while eliminating the need for a ninth school. It provides opportunities for innovation in early childhood that we could not have otherwise, investments that we know pay off for all children down the road. We already have the administrative and faculty structure to staff this, and we would recapture dollars currently spent on rentals to drive down any debt exclusion needed. Children in Brookline would still attend neighborhood schools for eight consecutive years with no redistricting. Most important, we can move forward with innovation rather than compromise, cheer a recommitment to leading the fight for excellence in education rather than asking folks to hold their noses and support a compromise that no one loves. But it is only doable with your leadership and willingness to consider something different. I hope there is still a chance to do that.
After Mr. Lescouet, we have Brittany, and I believe that says Stevens, or I think Brittany Stevens.
Good evening. David Lescouet, Precinct 11, Town Meeting Member, member of the Driscoll School Building Committee and a number of other assignments. I want to commend the school committee. A couple meetings ago, in public comment, we raised the schedule that Scott listed today, and I think it's very important that the school committee bring its plan to the select board. If it's on December 1st, that would bring us to November 5th. Latest, December, October 7th brings us to November 12th. Any date after that is after the town meeting, and that's not what Town Meeting voted in November. So let's not leave Driscoll in limbo. Let's get going on this. Thank you very much.
I kind of like the beep. My name is Britt Stevens. I'm the coordinator of career and tech education at the high school, and I am also the mother of a nearly six-month-old infant at the Brookline School Staff Children's Center. As we heard, the proposed capital plan means that the BSSEC will no longer have a home in the Baldwin School, and though there was a possible alternative identified at 55 Newton, that site has been appropriately pursued and deemed not viable for the program's needs. I'm here asking that the committee consider granting the BSSEC one additional year in the Baldwin School, or if space is impossible, to provide comparable financial support so that the program can ensure its sustainability in this period of transition. To be clear, we don't need the Baldwin School, we just need a space. I understand that we collectively face unprecedented challenges as we consider these plans, and I appreciate that it's a lot of work to do this thinking. I know this in part because I'm a budget manager at the high school, and the scarcity we see in this plan is mirrored in my world, too. I don't have enough space or enough money to do all of the things that I want to do in my department, and when I'm faced with this scarcity, I, like all budget managers, keep in mind the untouchables, the things that I cannot compromise. And when I have to make a tough call, I think about what we hold as core values in Brookline. This plan makes it seem that supporting a program that supports teachers is no longer untouchable. And more concerning, it also makes it seem like when the tough calls were made, that the BSSEC and retaining it for our teachers did not pass the core values test either. If, in fact, we do value our educators and their children as much as the children we educate, I imagine there are more creative solutions to the scarcity driving this decision. So I appreciate what Rebecca said. I arrived in Brookline in 2009, and I recall the opening meetings then talking about the data we see as reality now. This year, my opening meetings, both with district administrators and at the high school, included Ben sharing some troubling statistics about the turnover in leadership at every level of our district. That must have been hard, Ben, to do over and over again. I think eliminating support for a longstanding program that takes care of families, especially at the most pivotal and difficult times of our careers, that wouldn't really help us in retaining the quality of talent that we need to retain in the moment where we're facing all of the challenges we're facing at the school. So, though difficult, we must make decisions now about how to solve our immediate needs with an eye on the long-term impact and implications. I can say, two weeks into my time as a mother of a six-month-old, that the impact of the BSSEC program is undeniable, and I'm here to ask for some creative support for all of our teachers and their families. Thank you.
Our next, next up, we have Kira Flynn Corson, Kira Flynn Corson, and then Nathan Spritz.
Hello there. Can you hear me okay? Okay. This is my 19th year in teaching in Brookline, and my husband teaches at Pierce, and I'm also the mother of a third grader at the Coolidge Corner School. And what I understand is my limitation in understanding the complexity of what you have to do. There's a lot that you do that I can't understand. What I want to tell you is what you might not understand about what happens beyond the wonderful education that BSSEC gives our children, and that is the way that it doesn't just, like, reinvigorate collegiate relationships, it creates a nest for teachers to know people across the district, and it helps you create family members with your colleagues. Like, the people that shared my time at BSSEC have become family members to me. BSSEC has absolutely been the best professional development that I've ever participated in, and I can also say that my husband was recruited to teach at Pierce because the vice principal at Pierce was the father of a daycare colleague of my daughter's, and it was, you know, over conversations on the playground, conversations at drop-off and pickup, that these relationships are formed and deepened. And in a workaholic culture like the Brookline schools can be, anything that creates a human connection and keeps you there. And I can honestly say BSSEC is one of the things that has sustained the most stressful period of being a mother and a teacher at the same time in the high demands in both areas. And so I'd just like to mirror what Britt was saying, that it's not about staying at Baldwin, it's just making sure that this really special program that's not just so wonderful for our kids, but is really truly enriching for the teachers of your district. It's such an important program, so please know how it feeds your teachers, and please find a place for it somewhere.
After Mr. Spritz, we're going to have Kate, Kate Thurmond is going to be next, and then Rebecca Snyder. Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Spritz. I am a town meeting member from Precinct 16 and a Baker father. Brookline has faced a decade of enrollment growth that has stretched our physical space and our administrative capabilities almost to a breaking point. We have tried unsuccessfully. We have tried unsuccessfully to build a ninth elementary school, ease overcrowding, and we are racing to complete a high school renovation and expansion project before enrollment at BHS crushes our ability to offer historically excellent education and a huge variety of electives. Recent history has taught me that finding solutions and money for expanding enrollment is a truly difficult undertaking. As a town, I think we have a sense for what is needed, but collectively, we have proven unable to support any of the bewildering variety of options put before us. For that reason, I am pessimistic that any acceptable answer to our decade-long quest for more elementary school space is at hand. School construction is horrifically expensive. Thus far, I have been quite supportive of developing a total district strategy so we can both spend efficiently and communicate our costs honestly with Brookline. But since I'm very pessimistic we can develop a district-wide approach, I believe that we must now move forward on Driscoll and urge you to recommend to the Select Board your wish to pursue that project. Couple caveats. First, I think Driscoll is too expensive, especially in light of the fact that we do not have a plan. I think we should consider our resources that we have at each elementary school and make a decision about an appropriate level to bring them up to, and then plan this renovation and all future renovations around a consistent level. CCS may become an outlier, but it is better to have one super-resourced school and all others in par than to build in an equity problem that we do not have the financial wherewithal to correct. Second, let's keep our options open. I think it is best to recommend both professional services at Newbury and a Driscoll project. I support that. But while hope springs eternal for a district-wide plan, patience is limited. If we cannot develop Newbury within the next month, I urge you to split the two questions apart and pursue each at its most rapid rate. Driscoll is ready to go and should move forward. On preserving our options, not having a plan means that we should really try to keep all of our options open. Selling Oak Street before we build a consensus for a new school solution somewhere in town is certainly reckless and may prove to cost us dearly. We are not yet ready to foreclose any options for either classroom or administration space. I'm pessimistic about Newbury, and I'm unsure about future enrollment growth. We should not dispose of assets, of valuable assets, without careful thought under any circumstances, and in this case in particular, we may need every asset that we have. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we just need you to... Thank you, Mary Ellen. Thank you.
I'm going to keep my remarks short because I'm very impressed with what you said, Rebecca, and I'd like to talk to you more about it. It affects all my other decision-making. But I came here this evening to say yes to Pierce, yes to Newbury, and yes to Driscoll. Fast, and as well-planned and least expensive as possible.
Next, we have Roger Grand, and then Kya Vanderwell, Vanderzeal, Vanderzeal.
Good evening. My name is Roger Grand. He's in his 20th year, sorry, at Brookline High School. And several years ago, I almost left when my wife was offered a really excellent opportunity. And one of the two reasons we decided not to do that was because we knew that... Excellent of a decision that was to stay until my daughter was enrolled at BSSEC. It's, as Kya said, it's much more than just a daycare or preschool. It's a place where teachers form very important and powerful relationships. It's a place that builds cohesion among the staff, and that's something that's not really always very quantifiable as far as how it translates into educating our students. But I can tell you, it's something that we all talk about, the parents who have sent our children to BSSEC. That's something that we all talk about as, it's a place where we, again, solidify not just our relationships, not just our sense of commitment as teachers, but it's a place where I really began my own commitment to build the school and the school system that my daughter would go to and that my colleagues' children would go to. It's a personal investment in my work that really was strengthened immensely by the time that I've spent, and my family spent, at BSSEC. I think, I don't want to, again, not always so quantifiable, but I think really excellent schools are built on relationships. It's something that as teachers, people in the school building, we deal with every single day, intimate relationships with each other, with parents, with getting to know their children, you know, doing the part of raising those kids. And BSSEC has been so central to me as a teacher, fully committing and understanding that. And I have to say, this whole experience over the last several years of seeing BSSEC as a institution, which is effectively part of the Brookline Public Schools because of the families and children and so forth that cycle through it, seeing that really begin to slip away really had an impact on how I understood my relationship and my colleagues' relationship with the administration and with the school committee. Again, I want to highlight the importance of relationship, and in my 20 years, I've seen that relationship erode. I've seen the sense of trust that we've had in the work that you do slip as well. And I have to say, watching BSSEC slip away like this just further enhances that sense of lack of trust and lack of sense of commitment to us and relationships that are so central to what we do.
So next, after this next speaker, we will have Beth Gilligan, and then Nicholas Gerbel. I'm sorry, the combination of, I think it's Nicholas Gerbel would be next. Gerbel.
So my name's Kya Vanderzeal. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 15 and a member of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. However, here, I'm speaking for myself. I've had four children graduate from BHS, three went through Baker and BHS. I'm speaking as a grandparent, and I'm speaking in support of the two warrant articles and also in support of the requests that has been made to you by the Brookline Staff Childcare Center. I think we need to do, for all the reasons that have been listed, I don't need to go over them again, of course, that we need to support this childcare center for our staff. I also want to speak in favor of the warrant article four and five. The warrant article that deals with Oak Street just allows the Select Board to do what's in its best interest. We're not telling the Select Board that they have to sell those streets on Oak, those condominiums on Oak Street. Another thing, just want to reemphasize that because it was said a few times. And in terms of Driscoll School, I've been a supporter of that all along. If my name didn't appear from Precinct 15 on the letter, I'm sorry. I thought I had signed it. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say, in support of articles four and five as they are written and in support of the childcare center.
Thank you. Nicholas Gertler, a town meeting member, this Precinct 11. Relative new in Brookline. We moved to Brookline in 2016 after renting in Boston and debating endlessly about what we're going to do, although we really knew we were going to move to Brookline in the end. And so the result of our delay, I think, hearkens over to what's going on with Driscoll. Potential is, all our delay accomplished is that it cost us much more money to buy our house in Brookline than what it five years earlier, as I calculate, and taking from Superintendent Loomis, that every day that passes, we risk slipping with the Driscoll timeline. It's $1,000 an hour, 24 hours a day, even when we sleep. So that's the first point. Let's not delay because it's very expensive and it's looking all likely to happen anyway, so let's move forward quickly. The second point, there was a vote on a bundle that included Driscoll, and I think it's important to recognize that the no on that bundle was not a no to Driscoll. How do we know that? Well, one way we know that, thank you, one way we know that is that the organizer of that no to the bundle vote, General Van Skoyeck, is a key participant in the Driscoll IV campaign going forward. So that no was not a no to Driscoll. The yes campaign supports IV Section Driscoll moving forward, and the no campaign supports IV Section Driscoll moving forward. Finally, the uncertainty about what is happening or not happening with Driscoll is actually causing a tilt in the neighborhoods in the surrounding area, and it's influencing people's decisions to buy or not buy and to stay in that area or not to stay area. I have constituents who really are questioning whether they want to buy in that part of Brookline because of the uncertainty. So I ask you all to resolve that uncertainty, signal to the Select Board to move ahead with what the overwhelming majority of town meeting asked it to do, and advance IV Section Driscoll as part of the solution that Superintendent Loomis laid out for us. Thank you.
After Ms. Golden, we'll have Kim LaScauso.
Hi, I'm Kim Golden. I'm a parent of a current Driscoll kindergartner, and professionally, I work in an elementary school as well, so I also think about how schools function and work, and I really want to urge the school committee to move Driscoll IV forward. I had my first experience at a Driscoll open house on Thursday night, and was just impressed by the staff, by the teaching, by everything except for the building. And I say that because when you think about a school, it needs to have space for kids to learn. And at the open house, I was most impressed by my son's teachers' thoughtfulness and intention about every part of the day, and how she has morning's meeting where she's using restorative practices even at the kindergarten level. So she thought about how to talk about rights and responsibilities to the classroom. So I've been thinking about that a lot in terms of what rights do our children have and what responsibilities do we as adults need to do to provide the ability for our children to have these rights. And I've thought about this, and there are three main areas where I think we need to consider. First, health and safety, which is human right. The school nurse quite graphically described how small her office is and is completely inadequate for health issues in school. So again, once again, the building itself can't support it. Secondly, school security. In this time where we need to have safe buildings, where you walk in, people are checked for who can come in and out of the building, the way Driscoll is structured, I have concerns about school safety. So when we think about a right of children being in a safe school, renovation needs to happen. Also, as the interim superintendent mentioned, there are some mandates that have been put in place because the OCR, the Office of Civil Rights, had to become involved to make sure that students were no longer being educated in the hallways. And I'm really glad there were solutions for that. However, I think those are more mandates, and we need to have a new school to make sure we adequately address how to support our special education students. In addition to health and safety, technology and innovation, Driscoll lacks the infrastructure to have creative, to have creative innovation in terms of technology and steam projects and all of that, those sorts of facilities. Thirdly, I think about the right of every child to have a developmentally appropriate education, and I think this is directly linked to some of the concerns that the kindergarten teachers have so eloquently raised about scheduling and making sure that kindergartners have a developmentally appropriate schedule. And the building, there are many students having lunch, my son included, at about 10:20, I believe. And so that is a huge piece of making sure that students, making sure that the building is adequate enough to provide a developmentally appropriate schedule and space is important. So those are my three main areas.
Thank you. Ms. LaScauso, and then Ms. Quinn. Could you see if we have other people who have signed up?
I promise, I was going to do the whole, I agree with Beth and Nathan thing, but because Beth had to leave, I'm just going to say a couple things on behalf of Beth. I did bring my daughter tonight because she wanted, oh, I brought my daughter tonight because she wanted to see all these things that I've been going to, and she said something to me that really struck me, and I wanted to thank you guys. She said to, "Mom, can you just quit school committee?" And I said, "Honey, I'm not even on the school committee." So can you imagine how much work they have to do? So again, I want to thank you for all that you do for us. And I also had five stories about the overcrowding and the conditions at Driscoll, but you have heard them all before. I presented them to the school board the other night. You know the stories. We're overcrowded. Conditions are not great. But I just wanted to let you know, we have a team, it's a mix of parents, town meeting members, non-town meeting members, new and experienced people who have formed a strong and cohesive team in a very short amount of time, who've been working all summer and have done incredible groundwork, and are prepared to lead an override campaign for Driscoll if we can just get it on the ballot. And I think they just need that recommendation from you. So, thank you.
So Mr. Sandman would like to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment? Okay, Mr. Toffel as well, and Mr. Gachak in the back. Anyone else? Great.
I'm Mike Sandman, Chair of the Advisory Committee, which, as you folks all know, is the finance, Town Finance Committee. And I listen to all of this from the perspective of somebody who was very supportive of the Driscoll plus Baldwin solution and voted in favor of it. And yet, I'm going to be the skunk at the guide party by reminding you that if we have another four schools to renovate between now and 2028, we're talking about something like $600 million, which has an impact at current interest rates are probably 20% to 22% on the tax rate. That's very much a seat-of-the-pants estimate, but it's obviously going to be a substantial impact. So I would second Nathan Spritz's remark that you take a very careful look at the plans for Driscoll and see where and to what extent costs can be contained there, reduced there, what can be shaved off that isn't necessary, and there's a big difference between want and need, and be conscious of that when you look at Driscoll and as you think about the planning for schools in the future.
Hi, I'm Mike Toffel, a town meeting member from Precinct 8 and a member of the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Commission, but I'm speaking just for myself this evening. I just have one quick comment and then a question. I don't know if you answer questions, but I'll just raise it anyway. The quick comment is, for the funding issues that we've just spoken about, whether it be Driscoll or BSSEC or the ninth school or the pre-K to K, so I think we need to do all of these things, but I want to make sure that all of the advocates here in the room think about where we're going to get the money to do it. Because as I understand it, there's really only two ways to raise the money. One is through overrides, which makes the town less affordable to some. One is through overrides, which makes the town less affordable to some, and the other is through development, which some people are opposed to, but does create a new durable tax stream for the town. So, when you hear about campaigns to change zoning or overrides, I hope that we're all thoughtful about the revenue side as well as what we want to spend the money on. So, thinking about zoning and thinking about overrides, I'm just hoping we're all going to show up when we start thinking about where are we going to get the money. So, that's just my plea for thinking of the revenue side. The question I have, which maybe can be answered at some future time, was to Ben Loomis's presentation about the OLS option. And I'm just wondering, if we pursued the OLS option, where do we put the kids during the Pierce process? Like, you left that out, but that seems to me like a giant hole in the plan. So, maybe there is a plan for that, but it wasn't mentioned today, and it seems like monumentally important in terms of the use of OLS. Thank you.
Dave Geishock, I'm a Heath Dad and a town meeting member from Precinct 13. I largely want to echo what Scott and what Nathan said tonight, and I want to emphasize two points quickly. Driscoll is only getting more expensive the longer we wait. So, while we certainly can, as Mr. Sandman and Mr. Toffel and others have suggested, be thoughtful and potentially look to engineer more value into that design, that's not a reason to wait on getting it in front of voters. If we get voters to authorize $108 million as the current price tag sits and we're able to deliver it for less, that's not a bad thing. But if we wait until we put it on the ballot until next spring or next summer or next fall, we will have built in an inherent increase of $4 to $8 million before we even press go on value engineering. So, now's not the time to wait. The select board needs clear direction from the school committee that this is the right next step. It's not the only step. It's not the end of the plan. But the select board needs to hear from you, not to wait any longer on the rest, but to get this one going now. Please, this week, vote unanimously to urge the select board to put Driscoll on the ballot for November 5, and we'll all be here to come back and keep working on the rest. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment tonight? I guess we have two hands in the back.
Hello, I'm Kate Leslie, a BHS teacher in the Social Studies Department.
I'm Amy Lou, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Baker. Together, we wouldn't know each other if our kids didn't go to this school.
We just want to speak one more time about the importance of BSSEC to both of us personally. I want to talk about what it has meant for my ability to do my job the way that I am committed to doing. I live in Arlington, Massachusetts, which on a good day is 45 minutes away. I have a three-year-old who, if I dropped him off at the earliest possible childcare center in Arlington, that would be at 7:00 a.m., and I would rush to try to get here possibly by 8:00, having almost no time before the high school starts at 8:20. I would then feel committed to rush away at the end of the school day, once again battling traffic, to get back to him, a three-year-old in Arlington, and therefore would have no ability to stay after school and actually be the teacher I am committed to being for my students, because he would need me, because I am a parent first. BSSEC not only has allowed us to actually collaborate across schools, but has allowed each of us to be a better teacher to kids in Brookline, because it lets us hold our kids closer here. I know that when Simon gets sick, I will get a phone call and I can get to him in 15 minutes versus driving 45 minutes to get to Arlington. And yes, if that did not exist, I don't know if I'd stay in this district. I might move to, I might move and look for a district that is closer to my child, because I am a parent first, no matter how much I love my job. And I think that is a piece that is very rarely talked about in this discussion of BSSEC.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work and considering us. I know you've tried to help us, and I'm assuming that you're going to continue to find a way to help us. I work at Baker School. I teach first grade. I've been there for 15 years. I am dedicated to my profession to the extent that we live in Newton, and my husband would like to move further away to the suburbs, and I keep saying, "No, we have to live closer to Brookline." I couldn't imagine driving that far. Some of my colleagues that live in Newton actually have to get sitters before they come to work so that they can have childcare at their house to help them get their kids to school on time, because our school starts first. Even with BSSEC opening at 7:15, that's incredible, we're all there. The second that door turns green, we're all there, because we, not because we need our kids to get there first, but we need to get there for our kids in Brookline. I need to be able to be at that door before 7:50, before the kids in Baker School are walking down the hallway or walking from their homes down the street, so I don't stuck in the traffic, so I can get into the building and I can prepare my classroom and I can feel calm and ready to start my day. I love what I do, and I think that one of the things that I knew before I had children was, everybody told me, "When you have children, you have to get your kids into BSSEC." And I thought, "Okay." Well, I didn't know that was such a hard task, because there's three classrooms and everybody wants to get their children into BSSEC. It's an incredibly special place. It's Reggio-inspired. We are not able to go to BEEP or any of Swool, any of the other Brookline preschools. And this is a really special place for, I don't want to repeat other people, but for us to build community. Other people have said, "I wouldn't have known any, a lot of these people, probably any of these people with the red shirts on," mainly because Baker's kind of set apart from other schools, and I don't think that I would have run in and had this kind of connection that I have. And that type of connection is rooted so deep. There are people throughout all of Brookline, and it's such a community to feel like, when you say that's where your children go, that teachers who have been in the district, that their children are now in college, say, "That's where my kids went to." And we feel safe, because we have the most incredible dedicated teachers there who have been my first teachers as a parent. My children are now two and four, and although I am worried about the short term, I'm actually really worried about my future colleagues, because I'm now the one in that position saying, "When you have children, your children have to go here so you can do your best teaching." So, thank you for listening and thank you for working with us.
We appreciate everyone who came out tonight to give public comment. We do not respond to questions, but feel free to come up if you have any, have had any questions tonight. We're happy to answer those. We have a lot that we will be thinking about and continuing to discuss at our next meeting on Thursday. So, thank you.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Yep.
I just, does this, pick it up? I just wanted to say that the Driscoll community is ready to work for this override.
Anyone else before we conclude? Okay, thank you. And we do have a discussion and a possible vote on the agenda for Thursday evening.